Let's see, welcome to the August fifteenth Grafton Select Board meeting. Let's call this meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, so we have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow's the final night of the 2023 Summer Concert Series on the Common. The Claflin Hill Symphony Orchestra will perform at 6:30. It is a phenomenal event, the symphony is just fantastic. I try to hit that one every year. So if you haven't been out, or even if you have been out, that's a good one to take in. The Select Board's looking for volunteers to serve on the new Trails Committee. This five-member committee will work to help map existing trails, identify maintenance needs, and increase trail connectivity. Applications will be accepted until Friday, August 25th. Please email ta@grafton-ma.gov or send a letter of interest to the Select Board at 30 Providence Road to apply. Our first... We have no public hearings. And our first appointment from the Select Board is Capital Improvement Planning Committee. We have Sue Robbins on Zoom. Hello, Sue.
Good evening.
If you just want to give us a 30-second rundown of your experience.
Well, I was Finance Committee Representative on the CIPC for the past three...
...as a member-at-large to continue the work that they're doing.
Outstanding. Any questions for Sue?
Who is she again?
Who is this Sue Robbins? All right, Sue. Terrific, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Sue Robbins to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have... Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
The trustees of Soldiers and Sailors Memorials. And we have... Let's see.
I think that's just an internal discussion.
Oh, so we are to designate a Select Board Representative?
Yeah, the policy is either the chair or they're designee.
Got it. So I'm happy to take that on if you guys are... In agreement? Great, all right. Sounds good.
I move the board vote to appoint Matt Offen as our designee to the Soldiers and Sailors Memorials. I don't know if you actually need to do that because you're the chair, but...
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. All right, next we have election workers. Diane Raymond, Danielle Decker, and Joyce David. I don't believe we bring in election workers for discussion. We just make the appointments.
I move the board vote to appoint Diane Raymond, Danielle Decker, and Joyce David as election workers for the town of Grafton.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We have no appointments from the town administrator. We have some license applications in hand. The first is the Common Victular License for Donut Star at 204 Worcester Street. And let's see. Do we have anybody representing them here?
Yes, it's me, Miranda, from Donut Star.
Outstanding. Good afternoon. Do you want to just walk us through your application quickly?
Yes, I'm just, I'm still buying the business, same name and everything, keeping everything the same. Nothing is changing, just some ownership, that's it.
Terrific. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, did you say you're selling the business or you still own the business?
No, I'm buying it from my family and everything is going to stay the same though. Just like, nothing is changing, only the owners.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Great donuts.
Make sure you don't change those. Make sure you don't change those apple fritters.
No.
No, we don't. Everything is the same.
All right. Okay, barring any other discussion, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve a common victual license for Donut Star located at 204 Worcester Street.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a great evening and we hope to continue success with your business. We have a one-day all-alcohol license for the Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University, 200 Westborough Road. I believe we have somebody here to speak on their behalf.
Hi, yes, my name is Jessica Scott. I'm here representing Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine. We have two student activity events coming up. Excuse me, looking to have all alcohol permits. They both have a police detail as well as a TIP certified bartender and our Elms Cafe servers.
Terrific. Any questions on this application?
No, sir.
All right. I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day all-alcohol license for Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University on August 25th and September 1st, 2023.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and good luck with your events. Okay, next up, we have our Common Victular License for 25 Grafton LLC at 25 Grafton Common. I believe we have Laurel here to represent that application. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name's Laurel Seer. Nice to see you. Sorry, I don't want to meet you guys in there at home.
Oh, it's just fine. We have lots of people on Zoom tonight and it works just as well as in person, but it's good to see you.
Yes.
So yeah, if you just, I guess, if there's anything more to say than, other than you just purchased the inn and you're looking to, you know, serve food and beverage there, then...
Yes.
This is your opportunity.
Yes, we will keep the same. Today I will say that we give up open hour, keep the same like before weekend. During Tuesday night and weekday before tonight. Yeah, the food is different. Keep the, before the food, one pound of fame first and then we add more to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions on the Common Victular License?
So that would imply that you're opening soon? Do we have a targeted reopening date or?
Hopefully we will open September... You move things, the probably quick fast.
You cut out right at the date right there. We are September, but not the date.
Around September 10th, second week.
All right, so middle of September.
Yes.
Terrific. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve a common victual license for 25 Grafton LLC located at 25 Grafton Common.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And now we have a music entertainment license for the same business. Laurel, maybe you just want to walk us through what it is that you're planning on doing in terms of music?
We always kept like a light, the like a band music, just like a... But they some like that kind of really light music. The last John music.
All right. Any questions?
I thought, I couldn't remember and having been out, you know, I procrastinated a bit. Was there a reason that there wasn't currently an outdoor music license at that location, other than choice?
I don't think that they are seeking an outdoor license, are they?
Yeah, they are.
Indoor and outdoor.
Indoor and outdoor. Don't know. I don't.
I did, well, I talked to Amber about it briefly today. She talked to Mr. Berger. He said it does fall within the compliance of the zoning, so there shouldn't be an issue. But I couldn't remember if there was something beyond that that somebody else would have remembered. It could be just me misremembering a different location and placing it there.
I'm not sure they ever asked for it.
I'm not sure they did either. I do remember some significant discussion about renovations to the outdoor space. And they had some permitting hurdles, maybe is the way I would describe them.
Yep. Maybe that's what it was.
I don't remember them having any issues with entertainment licenses.
All right.
Having said that, is it a continued concern and you want to hold off on?
No, no. As you mentioned it, I'm sure I was thinking of the issues they were having with zoning on the onset. Yeah, setting up the outdoor space itself, not the entertainment. Just kidding. Crossed wires.
All right, great. Then if not, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve an annual music entertainment license for 25 Grafton LLC located at 25 Grafton Common.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good luck. We look forward to your opening.
Okay, try my best. Thank you, thank you.
You have our full support. All right, next up, we have the update to Bylaw Article 5. I believe Mr. Jefferson put this on.
I did. So again, in the spirit of procrastination. The Bylaw Review Committee has been zipping along with their work. And we're getting towards the end of the articles that need action. Article 5 is one of those that I had been tasked with bringing back to the Select Board to make sure there weren't any objections or updates to what has currently been written. Everything to me seemed in order. The only real discussion item that the Bylaw Committee had was Section 7. On that second page here, it says the Select Board shall designate as one of its members as clerk who shall enter all of its records, orders, and proceedings into a bound book and that this shall be placed in the custody of the town clerk and shall be open to the inspection of any person at reasonable times. It seems as though this would be an older collection of minutes. I did talk to the town clerk about this. She's still looking for the book itself, but in the 11 years that Candy has been in the town clerk's office, she has never seen it updated or been asked to update it. So it might be time to revisit and either amend or remove that statement about the bound book itself.
Outstanding.
Going back in history, there was a book. They were put in there. Clerk was the only one that signed them once the, once the board approved them. And so it's here somewhere, but who knows where. But yeah, there, we don't need, we don't want to putting anything in a bound book anymore. So that wording can change.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes, is there, is there a way to digitize it maybe? Because it seems like, you know, the Book of Secrets might not be the most current format.
I feel like that's where it's headed. Or if that's, that's what's been put in its place. To raise points, Skip Currier did say he has, he has seen these books. They do exist.
My signature's in some of the pages.
There you go. They're in the vault somewhere, safe and secure. But yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I suspect. Without having seen them in the contents, I suspect that, you know, all our meeting minutes, all our agendas, everything is digitized. It's all online and available that way.
And accessible.
And accessible.
So, yeah. So Anne Marie's not going to go find a book and a bound book and file everything. That's, she'll probably take that out now.
Yeah.
All right. I concur. I guess the one thing that came to my mind when I read this is the intention is that we would have meeting minutes and decisions documented, which we do that through our agenda or, yeah, our agendas and also our meeting minutes, obviously. Most of our contracts and whatnot end up in the packets, so those are also available and online. I guess the one, I understand the intention of this though, and I guess I do wonder if it makes sense. I know Anne Marie, early on in her tenure, followed up to make sure that we had meeting minutes relative, mostly up to date across all the boards and committees. And I know that that's something that our clerk has struggled with a little bit in terms of getting compliance with the various boards and committees. There could be a place for the Select Board clerk to follow up with that and basically just keep tabs of it so that we don't end up out of compliance in a major way at any point. Because now they're, they're up to date, so it should be relatively straightforward. To keep them up to date, it's just you've got to do them along the way. So that could be something that Select Board would take on. Or, you know, we could have that be with the clerk or whatever. So that was my only thought on this particular one. Otherwise, I'm happy to just strike it all together.
I know there's been some back and forth with the clerk's office, you know, without getting incredibly specific between, you know, the responsibility of meeting minutes and is it the clerk's responsibility to reach out repeatedly, you know, to committees who are behind on minutes versus, you know, that committee owning the fact that they're behind on those minutes and making the effort to do that on their own. You know, I don't, I don't know if any of that would factor into anybody's decision. But at the end of the day, we, every board, every committee is responsible for drafting those minutes, reviewing and approving those minutes, and then finally submitting them to the clerk. So, you know, I think as far as the bound book is concerned, you know, that would be my recommendation, would just be to strike that part. And maybe it's, rather than the clerk enters, it's the clerk maintains the records and the proceedings, and then they're sent to the custody of the town clerk. Because it's still the process that happens, even though there are electronic files.
Sure. I think that's pretty well described though already in Mass General Law. So I think we're just duplicating what's already in Mass General Law in terms of our responsibility for agendas and meeting minutes.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at it and I looked at it the other day and I just think that if we just say the Select Board shall designate one of its members as clerk in all records, orders, and proceedings shall be placed in the custody of the town clerk. So I think that's, that's probably, keeps it, it keeps the whole thing in there as far as the designation of a clerk. I think if we, if we delete it, we're saying we don't need a clerk anymore. You know, which in the hierarchy of the whole thing, we do.
Well, but in this bylaw, is there, there's no mention of... A chair or a vice chair?
Yeah.
Right? Okay, I'm happy with that. So everybody is happy with that? All right. Then yeah, I don't think we need to take a vote on that. You could just take that back to the Bylaw Committee and make the update.
Perfect.
Terrific. Okay, we are moving on to a letter of support for bills H.3690 and S.2104 to expand the bottle bill. Red, did you want to pick this up or?
Well, no, I just think it's, you know, we're sending a letter and saying that this, you know, we're in favor of this and hopefully our, the people in Capital City, you know, take it to, take it to fruition here and get it done.
Yep.
You know, so that, so that, you know, I know when we had, we had the gentleman in from, from the liquor stores, you know, you think about these five other cities and towns that have banned NIPS and they have, you know, they've, according to these guys, they have hurt their business.
Right.
We don't want to do that.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jefferson.
I did hear from Amber today on this as well, that two of the four liquor store owners have sent copies, excuse me, copies of these letters to all the representatives listed as well.
Terrific, great. It's good to know that we have their support as well.
So far, hopefully the rest will do that as well, but two so far.
Outstanding.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign and send the letter of support for bills H.3690 and S.2104 as written.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have the intermunicipal agreement for public health services. William, do you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, so generally, this is an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement. We have the city of Worcester with a health alliance. A couple of things it does, it extends the term of the agreement. And then if you sort of drill down into the attachments they send, it delineates the responsibilities of the town and the city of Worcester. A lot of it is the boilerplate things to keep the agreement going and functioning.
Okay, very good. I see that the approximate cost is in line with what we paid historically. Any, any questions or discussion on this one? All right, if not, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve and sign Amendment Number Two to the intermunicipal agreement between the city of Worcester and the town of Grafton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have, next up, the Chapter 90 reimbursement requests. And I believe these came from DPW. And there's a number of attachments in the packet representing the various projects that they are looking to get reimbursed through Chapter 90. Any questions on these or discussion? All right. Silence is golden. I'll take a motion.
Not always.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the Chapter 90 reimbursement request as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have correspondence. Does anybody want to bring anything up? Nope. I know you want to bring it up.
We skipped reports.
We did. That's right, and you have one. That's interesting.
I do, a cum-bearing report.
All right, go for it.
So I attended the Hassan Mesco Nipmunk Nation's 98th Powwow at the South Grafton Community House on Sunday, July 30th. The event, it was great. It was entertaining and educational. Several indigenous vendors there selling different crafts and goods. In, I think it was Community Advocate had an article about it and said that one of the chefs, one of the organizers was chef Jason Vickers from Seattle, which made me wonder if he was related to Jennifer Vickers, who helped us write our land acknowledgement. And it turns out he is, it's his sister, and she was there. And I got to meet her in person and thank her for her help with the board. And she was super appreciative of the efforts that we made. She said that it dawned on them Friday night as they were starting to set up that they didn't send us an official invite that they were super apologetic for and hoped that at least some of us would show up. So they were glad we were there and it went really well. I attended the Grafton Water District meeting on Wednesday just to, you know, kind of, kind of keep up in the know. I thought they ran a great meeting. It was, it was, it was well-attended. They pointed out how well-attended it was because they used to, between zero and two people at all those things, and they filled the room down at the water district. They were apologetic, understanding, and respectful. You know, reiterated that if they were sitting on the other side of the table, they would be lodging all the same complaints. They already had an actionable items list prepared to address communication lapses, more engagement on social media, and keeping the website up to date, which to me showed that they had correctly identified the majority of their problem and done their homework on how they were going to address and correct those mistakes. It was about an hour and a half, maybe two hours long. They went into great detail, a lot of Q and A. Residents also were, were super respectful. It was just, it was a type of meeting that you like to see, you know, a lot of good dialogues, some learning going on. That was, was good. Also, this past Sunday, I got to attend our Indian Independence Day celebration at the municipal center here. And I'd like to take an opportunity to wish all of our residents a happy 77th Indian Independence Day. It is officially celebrated today, August 15th. The event on Sunday was sponsored by the India Association of Greater Boston and the India Society of Worcester. It's their fourth year holding one of these ceremonies at Grafton. They try and hold them in as many locations as they can across the state. They are very thankful that we agree to this process every year. I, they asked me to say a few words. I was touched. I thank both the organizations for continuing to consider Grafton as a host community and that it's equally important to us. I got to raise the flag. That's the first time I've ever been asked to do one of those. And I also received this plaque on behalf of the town from the India Association of Greater Boston. It's an award of appreciation to the town of Grafton. It says, "We at the IAGB extend our heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering support and invaluable contributions in commemorating India's Independence Day. Your solidarity and involvement make these celebrations even more meaningful and special with regards to the IAGB."
Nice.
And that wraps up my, my reports.
You're a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
All right. Any other Select Board reports? All right. William, did you want to do the TA update?
Oh, so I have to follow Andy?
Yep.
Yep, no, I've got a couple of things.
Hope they're good.
Not as good as you. So just for some general updates of what's going on, we've started and we're about halfway through our quote solicitation process for an updated clicker system. We wanted to get those in by the Fall Town Meeting, and right now we're on pace to do that. So we've solicited quotes from three companies, Meridia, Option, and Turning Technologies. We're hoping to get some demonstrations and see how they work, and we'll make a decision that will work best for the town.
Nice. As you think about that, I would encourage you guys, if you're not already, to think about asking each of these vendors, how can we ensure resident confidence in the voting system prior to each town meeting? Because that has been a, an ongoing issue and concern and point of difficulty, I think, with the current ones that we have. So I don't know what that looks like, but just understanding how we test them and how, you know, how we demonstrate to the voting community that, that they're reliable, I think, is a, is a really one of the most important parts to them.
Yep, and so the reason why we solicited from these three, we got some documentation from Don Anderson, the moderator, who had a full list of every town that uses an electronic clicker system and the company they use. These were the three most consistent ones, and we decided to solicit from them based on their performance in those other towns. But I think that's a great point, and we'll make sure we ask that as we're going through the sales process.
Fantastic.
Yep. One thing on that is, and I do want, because I was in the, I was a moderator when we first clickers. So we tested them three times, right before every single meeting. We tested, everybody voted yes, everybody pushed yes, pushed no. Never once did you have everybody voting yes and everybody voting no, because people screw around out there. And eventually, after the third one, you go, we're done. We're close enough. But it's only 15 or 20, you know, that it's, that it's off. So you're never going to get that 300, 300, or 100, 100, you know? You get 110 and you get a, you know, 98, and then you get 98 over here and 110 over here. So.
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not a, it all depends on the people sitting out there holding those clickers in their hands, pushing the buttons.
Yeah, I agree with that. But at the same time, this technology has evolved.
Oh, yeah.
Since we got those. You know, our clickers are old.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So with the clicker in hand, for most people, it was never completely clear that their vote was been, had been registered. You sort of click and it goes into nowhere. And also the status of the battery. So the new clickers, I would assume, would have some of those features in, you know, included some of those capabilities so that as a user of the clicker, you could be more confident. And also as the recipient of the people clicking, that from that side of things, that you can have some accounting of how many clickers there are, how many were passed out, that sort of stuff that we just didn't have with the previous system, which forced us to rely on that sort of manual system. Okay, everybody click once, you know, yes, and then no, and...
And you don't have to point it at the moderator.
Right. Exactly. So anyways, yeah, good, good stuff.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
So, so you're going to meet with these folks? And then you're going to whittle it down to one and make that call? Do you share any of that? Do we get involved and talk about that? See a demonstration? Have a chance to have a conversation?
Have a chance to have a conversation with them, or is this a decision made with you and and Evan or or the team?
And the moderator.
And the moderator. Uh, yep, so we w- we can share the information we get with the board, and we've received information from two of them. And I'm I'm happy to send that around. Um, but we would also be, uh, we would also have to look at the price of the systems because procurement law does apply because we're buying a system for the town. Um, so that would factor into it as well. We can't just go with the one we like the best. You know, based on if it's the most expensive.
Got it.
Cool. Nope, but I I can definitely share those with you. I'm just curious. I just curious about that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Not not to be a roadblock or to be. No, no, not at all. It's so that stuff is interesting to me, and I think it's very important for, you know, our town meetings to have that system in place that's reliable. Yep. And it works. Yep, nope, for sure. We wanna make sure it's something everybody's confident with before we go into the next town meeting.
Okay, any additional discussion about that one? If not, uh, let's move on to staffing.
Uh, so staffing, our new recreation director started yesterday. Uh, Adam Lapointe, he comes to us from the town of Concord. He is getting up to speed rapidly between talking to the staff and the recreation department and talking to myself. Um, I think he's settling in well. I think he's gonna be a great asset to the team. And with him coming on board, we can move forward with uh two of our recent projects. So we're having a kickoff meeting for the Recreation Strategic Plan on Tuesday of next week with the vendor who we identified for that, which is uh Activitas. They're gonna be looking at all the recreation infrastructure and creating a long-term plan for it. Uh, bids for the final stage of the Recreation ADA Plan, the paving at three parks around town are due Monday of next week. Um, and finally, bid documents for the upgrades to conference room F are done. We have a consultant who helped us with that. Those will be circulated this week, so we can get that project done to make that room function like this room.
Okay, so those are primarily technology upgrades to facilitate for uh meeting, recording and a streaming and and that sort of, yeah, okay, great.
Yep, and that's it.
Fantastic. Uh, any questions?
I do appreciate that you updated the cover slide.
Yeah, see that. Gotta be consistent.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to correspondence.
No.
No?
No, sir.
Oh, oh, alright. So, we got a memo forwarded us uh from uh James Cummings uh on the uh old fire station costs. Um, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the with the uh other board members, is to just discuss that, quote those costs, um, and give, I think what we agreed was uh to just give some direction based on the cost uh in terms of what we wanted, what the board wanted to do, um, with uh the, you know, facilities that currently exist uh for the school um maintenance activities. So, um, that's in the packet if any uh residents are interested uh in that. Um, I think it was, uh, there was the the roof, um, some window replacement, the repointing of the um, the brick envelope, um, as well as the garage doors. Um, so the total for that was uh three hundred eleven thousand dollars. Um, I guess I'll just open it up for board discussion.
Would it be better to put it on as an agenda item, um, so that we can discuss it with when Emery's here and Evan is here and and uh, so that we can discuss, you know, the whole situation, because there were there were some other things that we asked at that point, you know, on this piece of property, uh, to get information on, so, and that's not in front of us, so.
Okay, um, is that what you guys wanna do?
Just for clarification, um, I remember us talking about line painting. Uh, I don't remember what else we discussed beyond that.
Uh, taking the building down and creating a parking lot.
Altogether, right.
That that was part of, that was part of this, this whole thing. Um, you know, so that's, I I'd rather, I'd rather have that as an agenda item in case somebody else wants to show up and talk about it or you know, Evan's, obviously Evan's not here, Emery's not here, you know? It, this is not something that's gonna happen right away, so.
Sure.
Um, cause we have to come up with three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars somewhere.
Absolutely.
That that could be at the October town meeting, you know, i- if we have the funds available, um, but, and I don't wanna delay it. Just put it on the next meeting, you know, when everybody's here.
Sure, uh, I'm happy to do that. I guess my thinking was, um, it's not ultimately the select board's decision. Uh, we're just providing input to decision that.
And the money.
Well, the money would go through capital improvement.
Yes, no, I know.
And to finance committee and through, you know, so we've got a number of uh sort of processes to have those discussions and
Yep.
Um, discuss the various financial options, um, but if you, I'm perfectly happy to do that, so um, if if the rest of the board wants to move forward with just kicking this discussion to the next meeting, we'll just stick it on the agenda. I'm happy to do that.
I like that.
Okay, then we'll do that. Great. Uh, any other correspondence you wanna wanna discuss?
The only, um, and I, I know, as as Ray kinda just pointed out, it's not really an us problem. Um, I believe the the warrant closes September nineteenth, and our next meeting is scheduled for the fifth, so I just I think it's something that we'll probably need to, you know, come to some sort of resolution on that night if if it's something that we're going to try to get on the October town meeting.
Sure, makes sense. Um, this building has needed some roofing repairs and envelope repairs and parking lot repairs and door repairs and painting and other maintenance items for many, many, many years, so um, that my thinking is that there's no particular sense of urgency to getting it all done right now. Um, and certainly, you know, once the decisions were made in terms of what we wanna do generally with uh the school maintenance uh equipment, um, then it's really up to the um, pretty much the school department to figure out how they wanna parse out the various capital requests
Yep.
in the capital plan, so.
Yep.
Um, but, um, I don't think anybody uh indicated that there's any um emergency maintenance that needs to be done to keep the building uh viable long longer term, so. Um, alright, well, then I will just, um, I'll just stick it on the next uh agenda and we can talk about it then. Um, let's see, we have lots of meeting minutes as well, um. I guess, uh, before we do that, are there, is there, are there anybody online that wants to, uh?
Probably just stumbled online.
Do a public comment?
Uh, there are no hands on Zoom.
Alright, great, there's nobody in the room, uh, so we will take on meeting minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for October twenty-sixth, December seven, and December fourteen of twenty twenty-one and July eleven and July twenty-five of twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these min- uh meeting minutes?
Well, Ray, Ray will, I'm sure love this, but it was a little depressing to read in the December seven, twenty twenty-one minutes about the transferring of the HCA from resonate to haze for a facility that still has yet to open in twenty twenty-three.
You're kidding, they're not open? Oh, my god. We should give him a call.
You're not still holding your breath for that uh HCA money to come rolling in?
I stopped, I stopped holding my breath two years ago. Probably longer than that.
Uh, any other discussion? Barring none, I'll take a motion.
I moved, uh, we're in discussion, so.
Alright, well then, all those in favor?
All those in favor.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Aye.
Still on vacation, Brad.
That's okay, you know, when 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 he was on there, he froze, he get, he sat in front of the camera, he just, uh.
I forgot all those in favor three times in a row, so you're fine.
Well, then, excuse me while.
And I'm the older one.
Excuse me while I get lost in the motion.
It's way easier to co-pilot these things than sit in the chair.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Um.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.